I, I hope you're very excited. This is like, what, twenty years in the making? At least, right? Um, so it is a construction project. I don't know if y'all have been reading the articles that we've been putting in the reporter. Uh, it's gonna be a little bit of a mess. It's gonna be a little bit of an inconvenience. But ultimately, it'll be worth it. Uh, this is one of our most collaborative projects the city has ever done. Uh, aside from the city of Castle Hills investing money that we did thanks to your approval. Uh, in the twenty twenty three? Twenty twenty-two bonds, the ones that you voted on, but we, we have money from that that's been allocated here. And aside from that, we also have money from City of San Antonio, Bear County, SAWs, CPS, and the San Antonio River Authority. So all of these organizations are coming to pitch in to make this possible. Um, for a couple of reasons. One, you know, SAWs and CPS have infrastructure in the area, and we're trying not to mistake, make the mistake that's been done before where they go and redo the road. And then they come back and tear it up and fix a pipe under there or fix a conduit. Uh, our plan is we're gonna have it open. We want to minimize the inconvenience to you, and we're gonna try to do it all at the same time. So like I said, uh, lots of moving parts, but as you've seen throughout the city, uh, we have a great team here at the city with, you know, the city manager, with our, our engineers, and, and we've got a system down. Uh, the Carrollwood project is probably one of the biggest ones. I see several of you here that live on Carrollwood. Uh, the plan is for us to capture the drainage. You know, we've been building in segments. And the plan is to take it from where it's at currently, uh, probably about halfway, and take it all the way underneath Lock Hill Selma and capture the water in that basin to minimize, uh, any water coming over the road. Uh, and then, and Manton, we're gonna try to capture the water and take it underneath the road so that we can finally redo all of Manton and it'll look nice and pretty like the rest of the streets in Castle Hills. Uh, it's been a lot of work to get here. Uh, you know, Councilman Smith, uh, who lives in a affected area, has recused himself even though he really, really wants it. Um, but we've all been working really hard to make this, uh, a reality and leveraging every bit of personal and professional relationships we have at the city and the county and CPS and SAWs and SAR to make it possible. Because without our partners, we wouldn't be able to do it. Uh, their, their dollars are making this possible. Uh, but so excited for this project to finally get started. Uh, we have a rib, a groundbreaking, I believe it's December sixteenth at nine thirty. We might be parking in front of your houses. I apologize in advance. Uh, but, uh, we are really excited to tell the story of how this collaborative project is gonna fix what's been going on for almost twenty years here in the city of Castle Hills. So thank you for being here, uh, ask questions. If you have any problems along the way, uh, please feel free to reach out to Councilman Smith, uh, or myself or the city manager. Uh, you know, as, as the projects go along, things are gonna happen. And the best thing you could do is let us know so that we can take care of it while, while it's happening. Um, the worst thing is to wait six months and say, oh, by the way, this wasn't like this, or I had this problem. Let us know as soon as it happens, because we wanna fix it. The engineers wanna fix it. Our contractor wants to fix it, and we're gonna make sure that they do the best possible job. Because we believe the city of Castle Hills deserves to have good work and good streets and good drainage, and we're doing our part to make that happen. So thank y'all for being here, and I'll let, uh, Mr. Rappley tell you a little bit more about it, and then I think we'll have the engineers have a presentation.
Councilman, did you wanna say a few words? We, we, we've made him the, uh, cheerleader of the project since he lives on the street, so any complaints, you can go directly to his door, so, so.
Well, I just wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight, and, um, like the mayor mentioned, this is, you made this happen. This is something that we've needed for a long time, and people came out and they voted for Prop A, and, and we're using the funds to improve the community and improve your lives. At least once this is over. It's, it's not going to be fun probably while it's going on, but we know how much better it's gonna be when it's done. So as, as myself and my wife, as owners of occasional riverfront property at two oh six Carrollwood, we will be, we are thrilled that this is being done, so, thank you.
Well, we wanted to have this meeting, uh, to basically more educational, informational. We had this when we did the first Banyan project because we felt like it touched on many streets over there. So the residents were very happy we had this meeting at that time. So we wanted to make sure we have this meeting, ask all the questions you need. There's a handout you can take with you. But what I'm gonna have right now is, um, our city engineer, Byron Sanford, he's gonna do a presentation that kind of goes through Carrollwood and goes through North Manton about what's going to be done, the scope, the specifics, and then timeline, and then we have our contractor, Dee Plata, David Plata here. So we have everybody who you have issues or concerns during this project to call or contact. Um, I'm available all the time, and, uh, so, go ahead, Byron. Let me, let me kick it off to you.
Good evening.
Thanks, Ryan, Mayor, Councilman.
We do have a short presentation. Um, also wanted to introduce, uh, Brian Spina. He's, uh, the engineer record, so he's very familiar with this project as well. And, uh, like Ryan mentioned, hopefully everybody got this handout. It kinda gives a little overview, and then also provides some, uh, contact information. So if you do have an issue, feel free to reach out, and we'll get it addressed. We will also have a inspector on site, which, uh, that information hasn't been provided yet, but at some point that information will be provided to the public. So if you do have any issues, he'll be out there, uh, a couple of times a week, maybe even daily, uh, interacting with the contractor. So if you have anything comes up, any issues, please feel free to reach out to them and he'll make sure it's addressed. So I think, I mean, I think everybody knows what this project entails, but I have a brief, uh, presentation, and then we'll open it up to questions. Because that's the biggest thing. Everybody has questions mainly about mail and your trash is in the back, so that's a good thing, so, uh, we'll, we'll save some time for that. Which button? Okay, go, you know. Kinda already, yeah, so. I just wanted to touch on the project limits, kinda give what the existing conditions are, which you guys, I'm sure are familiar with, our proposed improvements, and then talk a little bit about the schedule, and then, like I said, open it up to questions. So on North Manton, the project limits are from Northwest Military to Lock Hill Selma. And then for, uh, Carrollwood, it's right there at Banyan. Basically where Phase Two stopped, we're picking it up from there and extending it across Lock Hill Selma to that, uh, that little basin area on the other side of Lock Hill Selma. Um, so those, basically the project limits for this project. So these are existing conditions, you know, on North Manton, um, for the most part, there's no curbs out there. There are some areas that have curbs which we're not touching. Um, we're gonna be replacing the pavement section within the curb section, so there's not gonna be any added curb. If there's curb there currently, it's gonna remain. Um, there will be some driveways being, uh, replaced due to, um, the, uh, the culverts that we're adding at the low water crossing. Uh, we're raising the road in that area, so we are having to redo some of the driveways. And if, if you wanna know if that affects you, feel free to get with me after the meeting. We do have our plans. So we can look at, you know, for your property and tell you exactly what's gonna happen in front of your house. That way you're aware of it. And then on, uh, Carrollwood, you know, right now it's a curb section which we plan to replace the same, uh, section as well. We'll have a curb and gutter versus a standard curb. Just mainly for drainage purposes. And then under there, you know, we'll have a storm drain system that extends from Banyan all the way through, so. And that'll be in the middle of the street. So like I mentioned, um, we are gonna be putting in new curbs and, uh, driveway approaches for Carrollwood, but on Manton, uh, we're not gonna be putting any curbs, just maintaining curbs that are there and then replacing driveways as needed depending on the elevation of the road. Kinda touched on that. And then utility adjustments. There are some water adjustments on North Manton, mainly where the low water crossing is. Just to, you know, adjust around the culverts. And then we do have some, uh, sewer adjustments in Lock Hill Selma, but it shouldn't really affect you guys for the most part. These are just the pavement sections that we're putting in. Um, it's hard to read, uh, but on North Manton, we are gonna be replacing the full pavement section. And then also adding a culvert at that low water crossing, uh, closer towards Lock Hill Selma. And then on, um, this is just another section where there's no curb. As you can see, we're gonna be replacing the whole pavement section in that area as well. And then Carrollwood, uh, like I mentioned, we're gonna be replacing the whole pavement section, the curb, and then also the driveways along Carrollwood from Banyan all the way through to Lock Hill Selma. Schedule, I know the contractor wants to get started as soon as possible, so we're looking to start this month. Uh, we know the holidays are coming, so we're trying to do some work where it's not gonna affect uh, as many residents until after the first of the year. But we are looking to start in the next three weeks. Hopefully maybe even later this week if, if we can get everything, uh, lined up, so. That's the plan, and it's about three hundred and sixty days, so we're looking, you know, they're not gonna have everything tore up. Um, right now, we're working with the contractor to give a schedule, but, you know, they may start on Carrollwood, and then they may do a little work on North Manton. Uh, the idea is to do the utility work first, do the utility adjustments, and then do the underground storm drain, and then come through and do the, the final finishes on the roadway on that street section, so. And then one thing that we've emphasized to the contractor, and he's gonna be doing is providing access for all residents at all times. Now, there may be instances where they may be working on your driveway one particular day, but they'll coordinate that with you a few days in advance. That way you're aware of it and make sure that you have access to your property at all times. So I think that kinda concludes what we had, um, and would open it up to questions.
The mail.
The mail, yes. The mail, uh, shouldn't be affected. I know the contractor will have to provide access. Um, and they'll coordinate that with the mail service just to make sure that they can get in and out. No, so I don't know, David, if you wanna talk to that, but basically what they do is they may have to relocate it, but they'll still have your mailbox in front of your house. It just may not be in the exact location it is currently. Uh, but it just depends when they're doing their work. But they'll have it set up either temporary, or they may not touch your mailbox until they're ready to do the work in front of your house. Oh, for the, the groundbreaking, yes, and what we're looking to, what we're planning on doing is over actually across Lock Hill Selma and that basin area, so that's kinda the area that we talked about having the groundbreaking. Yes, sir. So, so typically the contractor will either do door hangers or, um, he'll, they'll knock on your door in a, like, I think forty-eight hours notice, or they'll try to get in contact with you, either going to your door or leaving a door hanger on your door, just so you know. Sure. Yeah, I mean, there's, we can if we have your information. Sure. You can provide it to us, and then we'll coordinate that with the contractor.
If you put on the sign-up sheet, we'll have that directory for residents in case we need a direct call if, if necessary.
On North Manton, we're not putting any curbs or sidewalks. No, so the, the area that has curb and sidewalks, that's gonna remain. We're doing all the work within the curb section. Yeah, I have a hard time reading it, but Brian, can you look real quick? Yeah, it's basically the same as what it is now.
I mean, there's not a widening of the street. It's just raising the culvert at the drainage points and then reconstructing the street itself, the asphalt. So there's not widening of the street itself. It stays the same.
Well, I think. I guess, Brian, do you have the dimensions? Okay, six, but the road width is not gonna be sixty feet. Okay. Not on North Manton, no, sir.
That's because the, because you do have a low water crossing, so the. We're reconstructing the whole street. Well, I think in particular, they can explain it technically, but, uh, in front of like Todd's, the street's gonna be raised along with the raising of the low water crossing where the culverts are. Because right now it pools in front of Todd's house. So that's what we're trying to correct.
And we can go over it with you. I don't know exactly where you live, but for the most part, the street, uh, elevation is gonna stay the same except for the area where we're raising the road and putting in the culverts. And then that has a transition. I don't know what the, the limits are, but we can certainly show that to you and what addresses are gonna be affected.
And, I mean, again, I know that Todd's gotten the brunt of this because of that water coming around and pulling in front of his house, but this is, this is why we're trying to rectify that situation. So the water just goes completely underneath. It keeps going down the channel, and hopefully never touches the street or rises enough to even go towards Todd's property again. I mean, can't actually say that because you never know the amount of rain, but this is towards a certain stormwater like, uh, ten or twenty year from that standpoint, so.
Sure. David, do you wanna talk to how you're planning on doing it? No, it's just to install the curb and install the pavement section, because the pavement section actually goes one foot behind the curb. So in order to do that, we have to go into the property a little bit, but it's all within the existing right of way. But that'll be restored back to existing conditions. No, you're not losing anything, no, no.
And if, and if you noticed on Glen Tower, how we just reconstructed Glen Tower, there was temporary, um, ramps done for residents to access, so that same thing will be done here.
Yeah, typically what they do is they'll, they'll, uh, tear out or remove the portion that's within the right of way, your driveway approach, and then they'll put in some base and provide a ramp so you can access your house. The drain's gonna go down the middle of the street. There will be some curb inlets in certain areas, but, um, that's something we can show you. That way we know what address you have or what's your address, and then we can show you exactly what's gonna be done. There are gonna be some inlets along the way, uh, spaced out throughout that stretch. You, I mean, you're more than welcome to do that, but, uh, the, you know, it's also the contractor's responsibility to make sure that, you know, they're removed and then replaced.
So just, Byron, you might let them know that the survey that's done before the project by the contractor to make sure that the right of way looks exactly the way it is before the project starts, and the, the right of way better look the same way when the project's done. Uh, we have in the line item of the budget for the project, there's dollars in there for restoring right of way. So it's supposed to be exactly the way you have it now when the project's done. Um, and I can tell you that, you know, this is the Fifth Capitol Project, I think, reconstructing over twenty-some streets, so we've been involved with residents, um, working with them on their curbs, their driveways, their landscaping. So I've approved some things that have helped residents to make sure that we're back to where it was before it started. Miss Schnell?
Sprinklers is another one. If you know where your sprinklers are, and if you could possibly coordinate that with the contractor, that way they know where they're at. They could possibly flag them so they can make sure that it doesn't get ripped out. That would be helpful, too.
Miss Schnell?
Every, all the, the works are gonna be done within the right of way, so it won't be going onto their property. But we can show you after we're done here on the plans and show you exactly how the water's gonna be conveyed. So basically, we're just taking water from one side of the street, taking it under the street, and then continue down the existing channel. Sure. Yeah, the.
Manton.
Manton. No, it's a multiple.
I mean, ultimately, this is the start where the basin, the water comes in. It goes underneath Lock Hill and goes all the way underneath Carrollwood. So, you know, it's, it's designed for a certain capacity, but, you know, I mean, what if we have a hundred-year flood? You know, five-hundred-year flood, it's not gonna.
Yeah, it's not designed for that.
Yeah. Well, it happened in ninety-eight and two, it happened in ninety-eight and two thousand and two, four years apart, so, you know. No, on Caro, on Carrollwood, eight-by-fours. Yeah. That's adding because there's no storm drain right now. Yeah, I think it's just a continuation of the same size culvert, right? Yeah. Yeah, so, um, yeah, our, our, so, yeah, I think. Yeah, so our other engineers half did that design, because I had two engineers working, you know, so we save time, kind of divide and conquer. So we had half engineering on that one. But, um, I can get you those to show exactly what it is from them. Yeah. Yeah. The CPS already did the work to relocate their gas lines, so it's now relocating the water lines through SAWs. So SAWs basically is going to advance, that's the dollars, and then the contractor does the relocation of those water lines. Well, I mean, again CPS, it's in the easement, those utility lines for them to cut that, and it's preventive right now because, you know, trees and the lines and, you know, power outage, but, um, I, I would have to explore because I don't know how much they're really doing the underground conversion, particularly residential. So, I mean, that's something we can acquire, but we're talking about costs too. I'll delegate that to Mayor Trevino to find out through intergovernmental cooperation. Yes, sir. Um, I don't think so because there, go ahead, David, I mean, we certainly don't want to see that because certain dry conditions in the year, we dealt with that in another project, so, um, I certainly don't want to see it again because, um, we, we did have a problem on a couple of streets with a contractor who was sort of waiting to put down the final asphalt, and there were some problems, and I, I wasn't too happy with it, so, um, we're going to try to do what we can to make sure that's not happening this year or this project. Go ahead, David.
And we're able to do that, that night, we can take off. Uh, there's likely a situation where, uh, you might not be safe, uh, looking to take that.
It's the same thing when we did the first banyan there, I mean, that we had to cover, contractor had to cover up at night, put some, some things around, so, I mean, they, they were pretty careful about it. I mean, it did take almost eight months to finish that corridor, um, so. Yes.
And, and the good thing, uh, David, he, he constructed phase two of banyan, so they're familiar with this area.
Well, there's going to be a lot of, I mean, it may be road closed through, like a road closed sign only for residents. That's typically what we do.
Yes.
That's why we, when we sent out notices, we asked for, for instance, like North Manson, anybody lives on Sunflower here, Carrollwood, anybody lives on Prince or Garden View, because some of those might impact detours. I, I would say it's going to heavily decrease or deter, uh, a cut through street. That's, this project will heavily decrease or deter.
Yeah, the, the road will be closed to through traffic and really just available for the residents only.
Because of the, right now, the scope only called for the reconstruction, that's an additional cost related to the project. When they first scoped out the project, you know, we borrowed the money to do this, we scoped it out to improve the drainage and reconstruct the street. Curbs were not part of the actual scope that we costed out and then bid. So, yeah, we've only been, in any other project we've been doing, we've only been replacing curves and having, doing adding our sidewalks or curves unless it's part of the actual scope that we have. I mean, right now, I mean, I don't know, I'll leave it to our engineer to answer that, I mean, as far as, um,
I guess.
What might deter it is less rain on the street pushing that erosion, and then this goes underneath the culvert now, uh, underneath the channel, so, I mean, go ahead, Byron.
I, I don't know where you live, but there, we can definitely look at the plans and kind of explain because there are going to be near the low water crossing, we are, okay. Okay, well, we can certainly go over it with you.
Yeah. I mean, unless you have an existing curve, I mean, well, look, I, I've been here for seven years, and we talked about this project seven years ago when I got here, and meeting with folks on North Manson, mostly Todd here, you know, about the problem he's had. Well, I understand, but, you know, we, we were hearing that, you know, from the initial meetings early on, we had another engineer do these plans, and it wasn't, I, I don't think was going to be good enough to address the water issue because, again, it's the drainage, and there was some input by residents about not having curves on North Manson. So, again, this wasn't scoped out to have curves because of that cost. I mean, like I said earlier, we've looked at individual projects, individual properties to see if that's something that we could fit into the project or absorb the cost of that project, so, you know, I'll let, I'll let them take a look at it to see if that's something that can be done, and they provide us a cost, and then we do a change order in the project. Just right now, it's not incorporated into the scope, not to say that it can't. Again, you know, like I said, I've been here for seven years, and that's been the major problem is that water not effectively crossing the street on North Manson and flooding properties, and that was the intent was to address this drainage culvert. Well, the intent was to address the drainage culvert and reconstruct the street, so. Well, again, I can have them assess, provide a cost of what that looks like, and if it can be absorbed in the project, then maybe something I can, you know, put in front of city council for a change order, but again, we'd have to see what that cost is. But then there might be a resident who doesn't want curves, so, I mean, well, I mean, I, I refer to Todd because he has historical there. I mean, next to you is Sunflower and Moss, they, they don't have curves. They're going to get a mill and overlay on those two streets, um, but there'll be no plans for curves there either. But, like I said, what's that? You, you're getting a total reconstruction of the street, but, uh, I'll let them assess and tell what a scope may look like incorporating curves and that cost. Well, there's no guarantee, uh, well, there's no guarantee, it's just what the budget turns out and then getting council approval or change order. So, go ahead, Ms. Schnell.
There, there will be some grading, uh, to com- you know, get the water to convey through the culverts to go under the street. And we can certainly, after the meeting, I can show you on the plans, it's kind of hard to describe, but on the, the plans, I can certainly go over it with you and show you exactly what work's going to be done at that lot. I think there is. Now, typically, they put a, a head wall, so we can certainly, like I said, I can go over with you after the meeting and show you exactly what's going to be done at, at that location.
Well, we had another contractor do some of the reconstructed streets that didn't have alleys, so there, there was just coordination with our public works department to make sure on those days that services needed to happen, they happen. And sometimes actually public works get in, gets in there before they even start their day. So, um, you know, Rick and his guys get in there and they get out of there, and if that's something they need to start with first, before the contractor starts working that day, they'll get in there, get the services, collect everything, and then get out of there.
Sure, we. Yeah. Sure. Sure, yeah, we, and the reason, uh, like Ryan mentioned, another engineering firm designed the low water crossing, and we have their plans, and we can certainly go over that with you, uh, individually. Sure. So. It's, it's all within the right of way.
So Todd, I'll get ahold of you and, and we can, I'll get the engineer from half, and we can meet on site to walk through and talk about it. Yeah. Well, I, when I talk about historical, you know that the first idea was to even lower the street even more, which I thought was just not very effective, and I'm not an engineer, so raising it, putting culverts in, hopefully capturing all that water that comes across that Ms. Schnell is talking about, will do the trick here, you know? Um, you were on the low side, that water pond up around towards your property, and so that's hopefully not going to happen because your portion of the street is going to be raised, street's going to be raised, culvert's underneath, and hopefully captures all the conveyance of that water.
And we, like I said, if you want to stick around afterwards, we can go through it with you on the plans.
Well, again, I think, let me get ahold of you, get ahold of the half engineer, and we can meet on his property and talk about it and show, and if there's some. Yes, ma'am. I, I try to keep the city attorney in the loop on everything. But, uh, we can have that meeting onsite with them, um, here quickly, and then if there's something that needs to be adjusted or tweak or something, um, obviously that can be modified, you know, but I'll let the engineers do that because I don't have an engineering degree, so.
We can coordinate that, me.
No, that's just, that's just to figure out the distance between the movement, so, we, you know, this is, like I said, the fourth or fifth capital project, and every contractor has tied the trees to know the distance on the curb versus, uh, you know, the easement, the right of way, so.
Yeah, the, the trees were tagged because that's what our surveyors did, so they know where the trees are located in relation to the right of way. Um, there will be some tree trimming required, but it's mainly going to be over the street section, and, you know, David can talk to that, but basically, they'll need to trim the trees to allow them to get their equipment in there and do their work. But they'll try to minimize that as much as possible.
And information wise, so, a- again, if, if you've seen, we've done the projects, we have the big whiteboard out there with the QR codes, you can scan the map and then all the details, it'll take you to the capital improvements page for the city. And so by that time, we'll have, uh, Carrollwood roadway drainage project in North Manson, you click it, that'll have the handout and all the information, schedule, everything, so, um, I don't know if you've seen the big whiteboard around that we put up at the request of Mayor Trevino, so. We're, we're, we're going to put that in front of your house, is that okay, Mr. Todd? But, uh, yes, ma'am. Any, any other questions, Mr. McCormick? Okay, I'm just waiting. All right. Well, like I said, anything that we're doing in the project can be assessed at a cost and, um, can, you know, either incorporate in the project or can't be, you know, based on a monetary, um, um, effort, a- as you'd say, so. Um, there's, there's been projects we've done where, um, you know, the contractors, um, within budget and can. Within budget and can absorb some things that can be done, so we've done that in the past, but we don't wanna be doing change orders. Um, at all, um, it's, it's not good practice, and the city council doesn't like change orders either, so. Byron, you have anything else? So, um, I thank you everybody for coming, Mary, you have any, Jason, any closing, um, go ahead, Mary.
This will be all the way that we go forward and really make a difference, where we cannot do Manson, and we could probably capture more rainwater on Carrollwood. And so, that's kind of the trade off that we come to, and what we, I think, have focused on through this capital improvement plan. Is making sure that we give you what you have, uh, you know, quality, features, the best. And so, uh, I don't, I haven't talked to all the residents on Manson, but I know at the boss area where I live, they want curves at all. They know that I want it all, they wanna maintain.
The rural.
The rural feel, yes, thank you, and so, um, as Mr. uh, McCormick brought up, you know, this is something that's been. In the books for a long time, and even when we went and got that money in twenty twenty-two, we already had a little bit of an idea of what we were gonna do here. Uh, and we were able to do more on Carrollwood because of our partnership with Bear County and the City of San Antonio. Uh, and San Antonio River Authority, when I went and sat down with Mary Nuremberg, he said, you know I can invest in drainage in the City of Apple Hill. And I said, well, how about drainage on your side, that we'll take underground and make it part of the system, and so. We've done everything that we can to make sure that, um, we're giving you more, I think at the end of the day, the street is gonna be a new street. Streets are designed to have a little bit of water runoff and avoid the depression, and, and it's gonna be a lot better than what we have right now. Part of the reason that we hadn't done that before is because it had been such a big issue down by Cos Place. And it's really hard for us to justify spending money on a street that's gonna be torn, torn up with. Firm water runoff, so the idea is, you'll have a nice smooth street, um, I can give you some advice right now. Probably gonna cause people to feed a little bit more, because it's a nice smooth street, and so you're gonna go from. You're gonna go from having no traffic, uh, which is gonna be nice, and then people have a nice smooth street, and so we'll have plenty of out there to, to do what we can. Um, really, this is us trying to make sure that we're moving forward, and, you know, if there's any other street that we've done out of the twenty that we've done. They wanted sidewalks too, but this is us trying to get what's left done for as many people as possible.
And just on a point, on the picture, I went back here, because originally, when we costed out Carrollwood project. You know, we were only gonna go towards the crown, we only had enough money to go up to the crown, put in culverts right there. But, um, with the help of Bear County and Commissioner Moody's office, giving us the million dollars. That expensive all the way to connect to, uh, the City of San Antonio, giving us eight hundred thousand to fix Lock Hill. So, that's sort of where we were at, we only had the dollars to stop and fix the crown at that point, but with their help. Uh, and their efforts through funding, we were able to go all the way up. Thank you.